...four ten to four forty to council administrator as set forth in the South Carolina Code, four nine sixteen to six seven zero. We also have a public hearing tonight for an ordinance of Williamsburg County, South Carolina approving an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park binding between Georgetown County, South Carolina and Williamsburg County, South Carolina, and other matters related to the form of government. The first hearing is the one on the referendum that would allow the electors of Williamsburg County, South Carolina to vote to change the form of government. At this time I'll ask Attorney Jenkins if there's any information that he would want to share at this time prior to us opening it up for further comments or response.
I don't have any particular explanation of the title of the ordinance speaks to exactly what the ordinance was, it's just specific questions about forms I've been trying to answer them. I'm not going to interrupt that.
At this time, we will open up the floor for any questions from citizens regarding this ordinance.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I rise-
Mr. Brown, how did you come to the podium?
I rise to speak to the ordinance of changing the form of government from supervisor to administrator former government. I think some three and a half or four years ago, there was a referendum that was voted down by a citizen of this county. I don't know why we're going to change again, but I think it's the worst thing that could ever happen to this county, to change that form of government. Look around and look at what happened to the school district. It used to be that the supervisor, I mean the superintendent, used to be elected there as well, and they changed that form. And now look what the mess we got. I got a strange feeling. I might not live long enough to see it, but if we change the form of government, ten, fifteen years from now, this county is going to be in the same mess that Williamsburg County is. I spoke to some of the council-
Red my objection to it. I want to let you know tonight that you are voted, voted to pass this, and this is the ballot.
To work against it. I just don't think that this is something that should happen, to take away the right for the citizens of this county to vote for who they want for their leader, for four people to decide that. I see it as getting rid of the strong, put in the weak, so that four people control this county. This is my personal view, and that's how I feel. I know I got three minutes, but I want to say to all the councilmen here, I don't care how y'all vote tonight, but I want you to know where I stand, because I spoke to some of you personally and told you how I feel, and that has not changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Let me recognize Tom Stuckey.
I want to thank all our councilman and supervisor for letting me stand up. I was involved in the referendum to change the form of government several years ago. We put in a lot of hard work. It didn't pass, but there was a lot of misinformation put out there, and I'm hearing the same misinformation going around now. I want to know, I have a question. What are the qualifications to be supervisor of Williamsburg County? Do you have to have a college education? Do you have to have a high school diploma? Do you even have to have graduated from kindergarten? I don't think you do. A hired administrator, we can put forth guidelines and qualifications that a person must meet. They must be educated, they must have a business background, and it shouldn't be a popularity contest to be, to manage in running Williamsburg County, but I do think you need to be qualified. Thank you very much.
Mr. Stuckey, to address your question as far as the qualifications are concerned, it's the desire of the citizens of the county under the present form of government to select their county supervisor. And I think the, just as any elective position, President of the United States, that the qualifications that's specified is that the person who is running for that office would receive the majority of the votes.
In other words, it's a popularity contest now, right?
So, the question is, this form of government and the selection process is no different than the way we select the President of the United States of America?
Well, I think that we, our current form of electing a manager of the county is a popularity contest, and that shouldn't be-
We appreciate your opinion.
Thank you.
Mr. George Brown?
I would like to address the county council supervisor at this time. I want to say good evening to all of you.
Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity to come before you. Thank you, Mr. Joe Brown mentioned three and a half years ago, but it's actually five, four and a half years ago that we were in this kind of same place. The citizens at that time who had participated, the vote, roughly seventy percent say that there's an agreement to retain in the same form of government. Thirty percent disagree. The concerned citizens that had the petition to bring it, to put it on the ballot, I think they collected somewhere around thirty-one hundred signatures. During the actual voting, I don't even think they got that many votes. The citizens were spoke, and they said clearly what they wanted, and why are we back there now? What have changed since July of two thousand thirteen? I noticed the gentleman that's preceding me, they did not go out and solicit signatures again to get it on the ballot. So, what it seemed like to me, that the county council persons that were in favor of the change before, now coming back and bringing on their own, regardless of what the citizens have said, they're totally disregarding the voters of this county and what they desire to have. We don't need a government that runs in that way, especially when there's so many other opportunities that we should be working towards. We should not be looking back, we should be looking to the future. If you got a personal agenda, then put it aside. The citizens don't need to be involved in what you have personally. There's some things that's going on in this council that should not be going on. Now, Mr. Jenkins, there's the attorney for this county, and my understanding, and I'll stand corrected if you tell me differently, he's representing all the members of this county. So, if there need to be a separate opinion, he should be able to give that to anybody that asks for it. We should not have members of county council going out and getting their own laureate to advise them on what they should do on certain things. That is money that should be going to retaining jobs in this county. There are so many people leaving this county because they don't have jobs. Our schools every year, there's a reduced number of kids in our school because the parents don't have anything to do. There's greater opportunity for us than be looking back all the time. Now, I was at the last county council meeting, call meeting, I think it was, where a gentleman got up and talked about recycling. Yeah, we got a recycling program in place, but it's not what it should be. My question would be, if we got to buy bins, why don't we use the money that's we're generating from the sale of the recycling to buy more bins? I mean, that's a quick fix to me. So, if we put priority on the things that we need for this county to move forward for our citizens, we can work to get it done. As long as you have personal agendas that keep you going backwards rather than going forward, then we need to change that way. Now, a couple things that I'm going to set down. The last time this happened, I was the chairperson of the Democratic Party. We were accused of playing too big a role in educating the citizens on what they need to know about the form of government and whether they need to retain it or not. I'm not no longer the president of the Democratic Party, but I'm like Mr. Brown. I would do everything possible to make sure that the vote would be the same as it was the last time. Thank you.
Amen.
Counselor?
Supervisor. My name is LaCarrel Cooper. I read about it in the paper, the ordinance we're putting forth, but I think councilmen should give us a clear idea why they are putting this ordinance forth to change the government. It would be nice to hear from you on that line. Can we get that tonight?
That's a question. That's a question for members of council-
Yes, it was a clear reason why they're putting up the ordinance.
Any member choose to address the question from Mr. Cooper?
I just would like to add, my reason is, after sitting on our council, everything, I feel like we have to have togetherness, be knowledgeable, and as it stands now, I don't get all the information to make good decisions. And Supervisor, I said tonight, slightly finance, I'm going to give an example, like our financial report. I'm on the financial meeting. We have not went over the finance. How can I make a decision and vote on something that I haven't reviewed? And that's my example. I feel in other counties, when we're looking at forty-six county out of forty-six counties, only three or four counties is left on this type form of government. We have to bring unity. In order to make decisions, you have to sit around a table and talk about it and know about it and get the facts about it. I use make a decision on facts, not what I hear. I read my stuff when it comes to me, when it comes to me, I make a decision. That's why I am going for change of form to bring unity. All the other counties that I have networked with and talked to, they discuss things, they have meetings, they sit at the table. And I just want the body to know, yes, at first, I thought about it, but it take all of us, y'all elect us to make decisions for everybody. And that's why I said, I feel like this state, the way this county is now, we so divided, to bring us together, everybody need to be at the table. And changing the form of government, all councilmen have to be around the table.
Councilwoman, I would like for you to be a little bit more clear when you speak about information regarding finances.
Supervisor, I'm finished with that. No, I'm finished with that Supervisor.
Well, you made a statement that you didn't get information regarding finances, and I'm not aware of any information that you have been asked to make a decision upon, that you haven't received information for an advantage. That's why I was asking for clarification regarding finances. That's a general statement.
I just respond to what-
But I just, she made a statement, and I just, just for the record, I'm not aware of any information that has been sent to you financially that you haven't received, that you've been asked to make a decision on.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, I thought David liked to respond.
Yeah, but I wanted to respond to a statement that she-
I saw you address him, and I wanted to-
Okay, excuse me, sir. Councilman Woods.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity. Mr. Cooper, I share your sentiments exactly, but the part, the main reason why I'm in favor of doing this, because I've been bombarded by numbers of citizens requesting the change of government, and let me tell you their rationale is this.
Why they do a referendum?
I don't know. Well, I'm just telling, you asked me a question, and I'm trying to respond to you. Why they didn't do it, I don't know. I represent the ones that were speaking to me, I represent them. Let me give you this scenario. I think Councilwoman Burrows said it eloquently just now, that out of all the counties, forty-six counties, there's less than a handful that has our form of government, there must be a reason why. Now, if you are going to fly, get in an airplane and fly from Chicago to New York, would you want to get in an airplane that everyone liked and afforded for them to be a pilot and fly the plane, or would you want someone that's actually been trained to fly that plane and navigate that airplane through the air? Of course, it's a no-brainer, a person that has been trained, and if we were to be in a position to hire an administrator, of course, we can put the criteria in place, we can put the education qualifications and all those things in place, at least there's some structure to hire somebody other than a popularity contest. It's just a no-brainer to me. If I'm going to get somebody to fly, to fly me someplace in a plane, I want a person that has been trained in, and the same thing with an administrator. Give me a person that has been trained in public administration, et cetera, or whatever. I feel more comfortable, I feel that they are more capable, should be more capable, of doing that job than a layperson off the street, that just because they are popular and people put them in that position, they'll be able to navigate us out of this dilemma that we're in right now, and that's exactly what Williamsburg County is in, a dilemma. And if we don't do something and get our egos and stuff off of our shoulders, we're going to be in the same situation Williamsburg County School District was in. Now, that's my saying, and Mr. Cooper, I hope that asked your question, if not, that's my rationale and my reasoning for wanting to put this back because of the citizens' concern, and I agree, I think a person that's trained can navigate us better than an untrained person.
Any other councilmembers want to respond before we? Would you identify yourself, please?
I want to thank the councilman and the supervisor for allowing me to speak. I want to say that I respect each-
Please identify yourself, sir.
I'm George Phillips, in the fifth district, handling the night. I'd like to say I respect each one of the councilmen and you Supervisor, but I think that the citizens of each district vote for their councilman, I trust my councilman to make the right decision, and I think that hiring an administrator that's trained and qualified, I trust that my councilman will make the right decision, that's why I vote. And so, I just want to say that I trust all of y'all, and I put my faith in y'all to do the right thing, but I think a trained supervisor or a trained administrator would be good for the county, and so I just wanted to say that, and I thank you all for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, county councilman and county supervisor. My name is Leroy Alon, council. I think that our county councilman has no more training than the county supervisor. I don't think they have no more training than the county supervisor. And we select every county councilman up here. However, we see what, and this is the only, Ms. Burris, about five meetings back, I think she was the only one saying that she goes to her district and check to see what idea she can get from the people in her district. We have another county councilman up here come back and check on us until voting time, so we don't, we don't get to help with no idea. We don't get to help make no decision, and I think, you know, when you trust people, you're supposed to trust God. You can't put that much trust in no man to mess up a history of life, not just only us, but we have children coming behind us, that every mistake be made in this county, in this county, our children is going to suffer from every mistake, and for one man to say he gonna make a mistake for three, four, five hundred people, I think we're going to be doing the wrong thing. I really, I didn't vote for county councilman to make a decision to handpick a, for us, and I think they need it to be changed every once in a while because some of them may get the wrong decision, and the wrong decision that they get, if they do it for us like that, and we already voted for that to happen, we enter a pickle that we'll never be able to change, and I'm in hopes, I join Mr. Brown and others, I'm in hopes that this don't even be on the ballot, but if it be on the ballot, we're going to fight it until we win again, because this is not, and no other county, we can't go by no other county, because we are different from every county of the surrounding county, we are different, and for us to, for us to go through this, I think we're going to be making the wrong decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Isaac Taft, I am from Salters. I wasn't going to speak, but I was just sitting here listening and looking. I have been coming to these council meetings for almost three years, and this, I must say, probably after three years, this is the third time I see this many people here. You talk about change, but you're not here to bring your questions. You are not here. Most of the time, I see more county employees and workers than the citizens. You're supposed to be proud citizens, more change, you talk about the Board of Education, what have you done? I volunteer, go to these schools as a mentor. What do you do? I see your kids, I see what the teachers got to go through, but you do not go there and take the time. What time are you making for your county? Anytime when you're afraid of something, this is when you want to show up, okay? This is ridiculous. He talking about change, I moved down here twenty years ago, and I haven't seen much of anything, okay? Because why? Give you example, the water, okay? I don't need no water, why should I pay for water? Okay, you need water. If you read your papers and you do your studying, you realize OSHA has made a change on every building that goes up. Any building, Lord, must have a sprinkler system. How can you get a sprinkler system if you have no water on it? Okay? The reason why you're paying about the hundred and eighty dollars. I was here for that meeting. I went around trying to get signatures. All you need was three thousand signatures so that the county could get a grant. Every person I went to, oh, no, I don't need no water, I should be paying for water. I ain't got water. I had to explain this, that's a pump house, sir, that's a pump house, you are paying for your water. But yet, when the tax, when they approve a hundred and eighty bucks, then you come here and go, well, I'm not going to pay you this much money for my taxes. Thank you, people. It was one of our persons said, who was it? I think if I'm mistaken, please correct me. Why must you ask what your country could do for you? But I asked, what could you do for your country? What could you do for your county? You talking about change, what have you seen? What have you seen? You talking about, you talking about the Board of Education, you talking Chancellor, this was a problem for years. It didn't just happen? It didn't. You talking, you go walk, I tell you what, if you go walk, I walk side by side against it for it to be approved, okay? Because what have you done? How many meetings? Ask your question. How many of you guys been here for meetings? How many? How could this board learn what's going on in your community if it don't bring its thought? I am my county, I am my area representative, I am here, I take the news back to my church. My church is part of another organization, my secretary is sending letters, letting them know what's going on. What have you do to change? What? You all sitting up here talking amen, what have you done? What have you done? That's my question to each and every one. I was going to say the same thing, but I cannot stand ignorance. I cannot. I fought for my right to stand here, I was over there direct, I did my time, I did my service. I want to see change in this community. Yes, I do everything what I can to make sure that my kids, I go by the school, I peek in their classroom. How many of you guys go by the school and go through the day and see what your children are doing? You talking, I want them to stay here, then what you doing? What are you doing to change? Why did they have to put a hundred and eighty dollars for each person so that they can be able to get the grant money to itself to bring water into the community? I said what I got to say, I'm sitting my tail down.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Excuse me.
Good evening, I'm Brown, the chairman. I sit here and-
Have your attention, please.
I sit here and listen at everybody speak, and my councilman, Eddie Woods, I was a little concerned with what he said, because him and I go way back, long time, way back, and he talked about the education of the airplane pilot. I'm just wondering, Mr. Paisley, who had been supervisor for eleven years, now all of a sudden he doesn't want to ride. He's qualified. He lead, he lead this county for eleven years, a lot of things have been done, which y'all helped, and now you, the way I see it, what you say, is that he no longer a pilot. Why? Why? Could you explain that to me?
You said he's no longer-
Now, you said-
You said he's no longer a pilot.
I had, yeah, but you said, you said that he's an experienced pilot if he was going to fly to New York.
Listen, I made no reference to Mr. Paisley as part of the pilot. I was using an example, a purely hypothetical, whatever you want to make it.
I didn't want to make it anything, I just want you to be clear.
We may decide to hire Mr. Paisley back as the administrator if we do so, just having the option to hire someone that we feel is qualified.
I understand that, I understand that, I understand that. Well, if that's the case, then why would you want to change the form of government?
I just, I just said why. So, we'd have the opportunity to hire someone we felt was eminently qualified to navigate this shift.
So, you're saying he's not qualified? So you're saying he's not qualified? You said you gonna hire him, but now you're saying he's not qualified.
We may, I just said, we may hire him. Didn't I say that?
Yeah.
So what do you mean? I didn't say we wouldn't have him, he not qualified, I made no reference to him not being qualified.
But you're saying you're going to change the form of government in order to get a qualified fellow.
I know we have to leave before.
I'm just asking a question, I'm just asking a question. Okay, now, I'm not for change the form of government. Tell you to stop with it. And I'm along with the rest who.